I'll call it to order and I'll read our regular statement pursuant to section 7E of Open Meetings Act. On agenda pursuant to section 7E of the Open Meetings Act, I as President of McHenry County Conservation District have determined that an in-person meeting is not practical or prudent at this time because of the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. And Governor Pritzker's related disaster declaration. I further determine that the physical presence of an employee or member of the public body at the regular meeting location is not feasible due to the disaster described in the Governor's declaration. With that, we can all rise to join the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the Republic. One nation under God. In this world with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First roll call.
Trustee Fritz.
Uh, here, there, whatever.
Trustee Cook.
Yes.
Trustee Dom.
Here.
Trustee Thomas.
Here.
Trustee Campbell.
Here.
Trustee Brandt.
Here.
Trustee Henning.
I'm present. Everyone's here and counted for. Very good. Pat, could you do the reading of the conservation ethic?
Sure. Goal number six, to foster conservative conservation ethic among McHenry County citizens, helping all of us regardless of the basis for our interest in nature. Develop a greater awareness of our role and responsibility for the total community of life. A conservation ethic asks us to assume moral duty to become educated about conservation issues and then to act on that information. A conservation ethic is an attitude that recognizes the importance of preserving the natural heritage of our county's open space. Goal number three, to manage its area in such manner that archaeological and historical resources are integrated with natural resources for optimum preservation, education, and recreational benefits.
Thank you. And Chris, could you do the conservation stewardship pledge, please?
Sure. We pledge to make a difference by standing up for our water, wildlife, and way of life in McHenry County. Our quality of life in McHenry County depends on healthy and stable natural resources. Thoughtfully developed cities and towns, a strong economy, and a beautiful outdoor places to explore, discover, and recreate. Number one, we will protect land which filters and removes pollutants from water while enhancing groundwater recharge.
Thank you. With that, I could use a motion to adopt the agenda as sent to you, I think, yesterday.
I'll move to adapt. Oops, sorry, Karen.
No, you got it. I'll second.
Okay, Dave makes the motion and Lynn seconds. Could I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Dom.
Yes.
Trustee Cook.
Yes.
Trustee Fritz.
Yes.
Trustee Campbell.
Yes.
Trustee Brandt.
Yes.
Trustee Thomas.
Yes.
Trustee Henning.
Yes. Thank you. Well, that we move on to resolutions. What we will do for each of these resolutions, we're going to have them all printed, right, Elizabeth, so that we can, so that we can read them?
They are printed. I don't have, in your board packet, it had the full detail. We will be putting them in a frame for each of our recipients. Do you have a copy or would you?
I do not have a copy.
Okay.
Does anybody have a copy?
I do not.
I am happy to read them if that.
That'd be great. So could you read the, read the first one and then we will have a motion made and seconded to pass it and then we'll have the vote and then we'll go on to the next one.
Okay, let me pull this up here. I need to find.
And I have, I have two, Elizabeth.
Can you, do you have it? Okay, why don't you as secretary, why don't you start?
Oh, go ahead.
All right, just one second because I'm going back and forth between screens. Okay.
Could I break in here for a second? I don't mean to.
Yeah.
But, but I think we've got a little bit of confusion here. Gail is the scientific database coordinator, not the G.I.S specialist.
That's my typing, so thank you for clarification. Yes, you are correct.
They work very closely together, though.
Yes.
I'm sorry, so.
The name of her title is incorrect on the agenda. She is the scientific database coordinator, not our G.I.S specialist. Because that's Cindy Rendell. So in our preparation, the wrong title is by her name.
Oh, is it in the, is the resolution fine?
I believe so.
I will watch for it. Scientific database scientist.
All right. So you're going to read that one, Lynn?
Yes, to Gail Brown.
Yes, thank you.
So this is, I move that we adopt resolution number 21-01, first of the year, resolution of appreciation for dedicated service for Gail Brown. To be unanimously adopted on January 19, 2021. Okay, so whereas McHenry County Conservation District owns and manages over 25,600 acres of open space and 35 conservation areas. 59 miles of regional trails that provide access to more than 115 miles of integrated trail network acts to restore its lands to their ecological health offers educational programs which encourage appreciation of the natural environment. And a fundamental understanding of the environmental ethic and develops its land for the safe, quiet enjoyment and interests of McHenry County residents. And whereas the district is supported in its efforts by many dedicated staff and volunteers who engage in a variety of activities, including protection of natural resources. And the flora, fauna, and people who share them, site and facility maintenance and improvement, natural area restoration. Okay, wait a second. Trail clearing and monitoring, wildlife monitoring and care, environmental, historical, and cultural interpretation, education outreach programs, and many other endeavors. And whereas Gail Brown has served as the lead volunteer since 1994, voting her time to the Powers Walker House in McConnell Farmstead. And currently plans to continue to volunteer into her retirement. And whereas Gail Brown began with the district on June 12, 2020, 2002, as a scientific database coordinator with the Natural Resources Department of the Conservation District. And whereas Gail Brown had or worked on projects that are the cornerstone of the work done today in ecological restoration. And whereas Gail Brown compiled and digitized over 8,777 surveys on species groups from lichens to mosses. Which resulted in the largest database ever assembled for an individual county in the Midwest. And whereas Gail Brown developed the McHenry County Natural Areas Inventory into a user-friendly system that continues to be a go-to document for multiple agencies to mitigate potential impacts to natural resources. And whereas Gail Brown led numerous data upgrades to the district hunting program, provided input and proof of the district agricultural database, which has made accurate lease information far easier to track. And whereas Gail Brown worked in developing the Lost Valley Research Library, which resulted in a more usable area for project research. And whereas Gail Brown has served for many years as the district's representative to the McHenry County Historic Preservation Commission. And whereas Gail Brown has provided invaluable input to the management of the district's building inventory through her knowledge of historical architecture. And whereas Gail Brown developed and managed the Land Preservation and Natural Resources Management Divisions. Hours breakdown system allowing for accurate recording of thousands of hours of project labor for grant reporting and public transparency. And whereas Gail Brown has remained steadfast in her belief of the Conservation District's mission and gained immense satisfaction in providing the public with great opportunities to learn about and connect with nature. And whereas Gail Brown has decided to retire from her position effective February 5, 2021. Let it be resolved that the officers and Board of Trustees of McHenry County Conservation District hereby express and convey their deep sincere gratitude and heartfelt appreciation to Gail Brown. For her continued dedication to the mission of the district and that this resolution be incorporated into the official records of the district and that Gail Brown receive recognition through this resolution. And so in witness hereof, we hereon to dis subscribe our names and affix the seal of the district this 19th day of January 2021.
Woo, very good. Dave, is that a second?
A second.
Very good, Dave. Thank you. Could I have a, could I have a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Thomas. Trustee, trusty Thomas?
Yes, sorry, my dogs again. Yes.
Trustee Brandt.
Yes.
Trustee Fritz.
Yes.
Trustee Dom.
Yes.
Trustee Cook.
Yes.
Trustee Campbell.
Yes.
Trustee Henning.
Yes. Resolution passes unanimously. We'd like to thank Gail for all the work that she's done over all these years and it sounds like was a monumental task. Did you start with anything to begin with on these or were you the pioneer of all this?
It was a group effort that evolved through time and I am very fortunate to have worked with such a high quality of people. It's, everybody believes in what they're doing and it's been an honor to work with everyone through the years.
Well, thank you for everything you've done. It's awesome. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Okay, that moves us on to the next resolution. Elizabeth, do you have that one?
I do, yes. And I do not know if Bob is with us this evening or not. I don't know if he.
Does not look so.
Okay, so this is resolution 21-04. It's a resolution of appreciation for dedicated service to Robert Bob Nowak. McHenry County Conservation District Officers and Board of Trustees adopted on January 19, 2021. Whereas McHenry County Conservation District owns and manages over 25,600 acres of open space and 35 conservation areas. 59 miles of regional trails that provide access to more than 115 miles of integrated trail networks. Acts to restore its lands to ecological health, offers educational programs which encourage appreciation of the natural environment and a fundamental understanding of the environmental ethic. And develops its lands for the safe and quiet enjoyment and interest of McHenry County residents. And whereas the district is supported in its efforts by many dedicated staff, volunteers, and legislators, including members of the McHenry County Board. And whereas Robert Bob Nowak began serving as the County Board Liaison to the District Board of Trustees in 2016. And whereas through the efforts of Bob Nowak, who has shared his knowledge, time, and expertise with the district. The residents of McHenry County, including the flora, fauna, and human, have benefited from his support beyond the role of liaison. Therefore, let it be resolved that the officers and the Board of Trustees of the McHenry County Conservation District hereby. Hereby express and convey their deep and sincere gratitude and heartfelt appreciation to Bob Nowak. And that this resolution be incorporated into the official records of the district and that Robert Bob Nowak receive recognition through this resolution. In witness whereof, we have hereon to subscribe our names and affix the seal of the district this 19th day of January 2021.
Very good. Do I have a motion? Elizabeth can't make that motion, so.
I'll make a motion.
Linda, did I hear you? And Linda, make some motions or second?
I'll second.
Bill, I have a motion made and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Brandt.
Yes.
Trustee Fritz.
Yes.
Trustee Campbell.
Yes.
Trustee Cook.
Yes.
Trustee Dom.
Yes.
Trustee Thomas.
Yes.
Trustee Henning.
Yes, and I do appreciate everything Bob did. He's not with us though tonight, so we'll, we'll convey that message to him somewhere along the line, so.
He was a pleasure to work with.
Yes, he was. I got to sit next to him for a year or two there, so I enjoyed that. It was a nice man, nice guy to visit with, so. All right, with that taken care of, we'll move on to the trustees report. Are there any, any reports from any trustees on anything they've been involved in right now?
Well, as I usually do, it's not so much what I've been involved with, it's some shout-outs, a lot of shout-outs to our police department. And I gather these as I read email from one board meeting to another. So there's Sergeant Stewart and Officers Hibler and Retech assisted six kids with shop with a cop. I love that. And Sergeant Stewart stopped a subject who left the scene of an accident. So we're participating in county policing. Officer Bogowski assisted in a situation that led to a drug investigation and a citation. And Sergeant Wolf and Bogowski assisted in carry police in locating a suicidal subject using their night vision. And that's part of our equipment and I think that's a, that's important and I think that's good. Officer Montgomery did his Christmas deliveries. I thought was a nice touch. And I got to tell you, we've been using MCCD trails all year, but when it snowed, we didn't realize how wonderful it was to have our trails groomed. One time we hiked over at Chain of Lakes and we just got a half mile and we were busting through. It was very difficult. And we just hiked today over at West Buendia Lake, Harrison Benwell, and it was delightful. So thanks, staff, for grooming those trails. And then I read that Marigas through our outreach, our staff's outreach, is donating $800 worth of propane for the Festival of the Sugars. Now that's, that's wonderful. And then I noticed also that there's, staff is adding three hiking trails to the Prairie State Hike App. And we use another app, but I'm going to start using that one when we're on the trail. So I think that gets us people more out and I appreciate everyone's efforts. So thank you.
Thank you, Dave. All right, anyone else? Okay, I'm not seeing anyone else. That will move us on to County Board Liaison Report. Is Kelly Wagoner is with us, I believe?
I am.
Great.
I really don't have anything to say, except I've enjoyed learning more about the Conservation District. I was really interested in the conversation that you guys had Thursday about the buffalo. I thought that was really interesting. But anyway, I do have a county board meeting tonight at seven o'clock, so if I, you know, leave early, I'm not sure how late this is going to go. I apologize, but I have to go to that meeting.
No problem. Well, thank, thank you for being here with us this evening and I'm sure you'll have a lot to report going forward. So, thank you. I have nothing that I, that is out of the ordinary to report, so I think we're fine there. That opens us up to public comments.
I don't see anything.
Okay, there's nothing on public comments. That brings us to the consent report or agenda, I'm sorry. 12-7 needs to be pulled and tabled, so could I have a motion to that effect?
Yeah, I will move the table 12.7, resolution 21.3, 21.03.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Linda seconds?
Yes.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll have a roll call vote.
Trustee Campbell.
Yes.
Trustee Thomas.
Yes.
Trustee Brandt.
Yes.
Trustee Cook.
Yes.
Trustee Dom.
Yes.
Trustee Fritz.
Yes.
Trustee Henning.
Yes, motion passes unanimously. And now I would call on our Secretary Lynn to read the consent agenda. Minus 12.7 and that will be as her motion and then we'll need a second afterwards. I guess I didn't ask, does anybody else have anything else they want pulled?
I have a question.
Okay.
So under manual checks issued from 1216 to 115. There's an item I-8970, intergovernmental personnel. It's a series of 21 checks that totals $94,000 plus thousand dollars. Some are categorized by individual name and others are just labeled January medical and dental. So. I wasn't exactly sure what all that was and I would just ask that it be clarified.
So that was in bills payable, Bill, or was that on this, the treasurer's report?
Well, it's called manual checks issued. And if I've raised it at the wrong time, I apologize.
I think I saw those two and they came from Megan before tonight's meeting and I think that is bills payable.
That is correct. It's the second area that goes on bills payable, so it's, it's not a consent agenda item, but we're happy to answer that question now or we can answer it when we get to it. It's been raised. So President Henning, what is your preference?
Well, let's, let's move on with the consent agenda and we'll get to it when we get to those bills. Okay, is that fine with everyone?
Sure, it's fine with me. I.
Okay. No, that's, that's fine. It works out well. We, we can get to it then. So Lynn, if there's nothing else, you can go ahead and make your motion.
Okay, and I'm going to be using your screen, right, Elizabeth? Okay, great. Thank you. I move that we approve the consent agenda, which includes the following. 12.1, approval of minutes. 12.1A, December 17, 2020, regular meeting. 12.1B, December 22, 2020, special call meeting. And 12.1C, November 19, 2020, executive session. 12.2, treasurer's report. 12.2A, acceptance of treasurer's report for December 31, 2020. 12.2B, investment report, quarter three.
I'll second that.
Oh, we're not quite done yet.
Okay.
Sorry, delay, delay.
They're waiting for the screen to change, but I'll take your second soon as we get there.
Okay.
Thank you. 12.3, authorization to prepare specifications and letting of bids for the printing and mailing of four issues of the district's quarterly magazine landscapes. Beginning with the summer 2021 issue and running through spring 2022 with a one-year renewal option. 12.4, authorization to prepare specifications and let bids to secure the leasing of the PLV-11469-9746 Kincaid parcel. 12.5, ordinance number 21996, an ordinance extending the health emergency supplement to the Personnel Policy and Procedure Manual. For 10.05 six-leaf policy through June 30, 2021, due to the COVID-19 pandemic. 12.6, resolution number 21-02, a resolution appointing Ray Eisbrenner, 2021 to 2024, and Kevin Ivors, 2021 to 2024, as directors to the McHenry County Conservation Foundation.
Thank you. And with that, I will take trustee Cook's second. Since the consent agenda, there's no discussion, so roll call, please.
Trustee Fritz.
Yes.
Trustee Cook.
Yes.
Trustee Dom.
Yes.
Trustee Thomas.
Yes.
Trustee Brandt.
Yes.
Trustee Campbell.
Yes.
Trustee Henning.
Yes, motion passes unanimously. That will move us on to new and unfinished board business, approval of bills payable for the month of October 2020. I think this would be a good time to discuss those bills.
Elizabeth, you want me to answer that?
Please, thank you, Andy.
So the intergovernmental personnel, it's actually the IPBC, Intergovernmental Personnel Benefit Co-op that we joined to have the insurance. 2021, this calendar year is the first year we've been under IPBC. That's just, the first two words is all that fits on that description. Individual names that you see, those are retirees under IMRA for required to offer retirees health insurance. They pay 100% of the premium. And then you see the other entries there. It's just the total health insurance by department being allocated to each operational department.
And are those, those expenses repeat monthly, quarterly, yearly, how?
We, we pay it monthly, so it should be very similar each month. Occasionally you see changes.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Andy. Okay, that moves us to consideration of payment of bills to conserve. Treasurer Cook, could you make that motion for 12?
John, excuse me, but it didn't, we didn't do the treasurer's.
Yeah, I, I should have known, but Dave, I was thinking I was missing something there. Do you have some pull?
I do, but does anybody, I always do, but does anybody else?
Well, I count on it.
Okay, I'll go. So a vendor H2552, Hay and Associates for $8,000, $8,160. And then I've got a vendor J2010, Jensen's Plumbing and Heating for $680 and I saw later it was for a humidifier. And I will, if you want another one, I can, but if someone wants to go, that'd be fine, too.
We'll throw yours out there and then I'll see if there's other ones. We can always go over the limit.
Okay, vendor 3566, Menards of Crystal Lake for $155.71.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any bills they've pulled that they're interested in? Okay, I think we're good. Thank you, Dave.
You betcha.
Okay, now Treasurer Cook, you could make your motion on 131B.
So I move that we pay. Bill, that we. How should I say this? I move that we accept the treasurer's internal audit, item 131A. And should I go through the rest of them, John?
Just, just do, I don't need a motion for 131A. I need one for 131B right now, just one at a time. So 131B, please.
I will move that we approve the payment to conserve FS. It's on the submission of Bill's report for the period ending December 31, 2020.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Uh, Pat, seconds. Okay, is there any discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Dom.
Yes.
Trustee Brandt.
Yes.
Trustee Fritz.
Yes.
Trustee Campbell.
Yes.
Trustee Thomas.
Yes.
Trustee Cook.
Yes.
Trustee Henning.
I will abstain. So the motion carries with 6, 4, and one abstention. Now, Bill, if you could give me a motion on 131C.
Okay, I move that we approve the payment of balance of bills on submission of Bill's report for the period ending December 31, 2021.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second? Second?
Okay.
Lynn? Okay, thank you, Lynn. All in favor or for roll call, please?
Trustee Thomas.
Yes.
Trustee Fritz.
Yes.
Trustee Dom.
Yes.
Trustee Campbell.
Yes.
Trustee Cook.
Yes.
Uh, trusty Brandt.
Yes.
Trustee Henning.
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, that will bring us to 13-2. Elizabeth, do you have anything you'd like to say about this before we make the motion? Do you have any clarification?
Yes, no, thank you. I want to extend appreciation to the Board of Trustees and the staff. We've had several discussions over the last several months on our budget. The tentative budget that you have in front tonight to approve, which will go on display for 30 days. Has all the changes as discussed, with the exception of the change that will be made to the reduction on the DEI initiative. That'll show up in the final and that will go from 12,000 to 8. And then we will also then be making changes with the abatement as what is proposed with the property tax abatement. So those will be reflected in the final budget and that's all I have.
Okay, is there any questions? If Bill, you could make the motion then.
Well, then I will move that we adopt the fiscal year 2022 tentative combined annual budget and appropriation ordinance as has been presented to us, number 21-995.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I will.
Uh, Dave, I have a second from Dave. Is there any, any more, any discussion at all? Hearing none, I'd ask for a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Brandt.
Yes.
Trustee Ford.
Is that my name?
Trustee Fritz.
Yes.
Um, trustee Campbell.
Yes.
Trustee Cook.
Yes.
Trustee Thomas.
Yes.
Trustee Dom.
Yes.
Trustee Henning.
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everyone. If there's anything that comes up between now and finally, we've got 30 days to discuss that, so be, be thinking about that if there's anything else coming up. That would bring us to Executive Director's Report. Elizabeth?
All right, I am going to just highlight a few key things, not to go through each of these areas. You have many reports as we always present quarterly in your board packet. So if there were any specific questions on strategic planning, our dashboard, which shows our numbers of how we're showing. our dashboard, which shows our numbers of how we're showing with registration, attendance, and other actions that staff are taking. You've got the news clippings. You have our foundations report, quarter 3. And then you also have our COVID update, which shows how we're tracking as we've been moving through this fiscal year. Actually, we started the fiscal year right into having to pivot. We are currently in our social separation stage. Our pandemic group continues to meet. We do know that the state of Illinois did move into a Tier 2, so we will be reassessing. One of the things that would change, I think I've mentioned before, would be the opening of our visitor centers. Again, we're limited by group sizes, 10 and under, but that'll be on the docket for discussion tomorrow. All of our campsites, programs, activities are open. We're working with our special events. So the big event up and coming is the Festival of Sugar Maples, and things are going well, and registration in advance for this year's event. So I'm very pleased and thank you for approving an extension on the COVID, just to provide some support and backup with our staff. Since we had right before the holidays after Halloween, you know, we did have a few cases of individuals going out, not necessarily contracting it, but family members. But we've been really solid since then, and everybody's staying well and safe. So again, it's a kudos to the team working together, and we definitely mastered the art of pivoting. As far as the legislative update, I did want to provide a little bit more time and to go into this because there's been a lot of activity. As we know, we've had a presidential election. We have inauguration day tomorrow. And and so we hope for the best as that goes forward. But obviously, there'll be new individuals that we're connecting, both in the Department of the Interior and other offices at the federal level that we'll be connecting with, and those that will still be representing us. So continuing to build those relationships. In Illinois, we have elections as well, and there's been big changes down there. I did put a little bit of this in our WikiWOW, but we have a new speaker. And Speaker Welch is no stranger to conservation, forest preserves, and park districts. In fact, he's been very supportive and was named as Illinois Association of Park District's Legislature of the Year last year, and he is also a partner with Ansel Blink, and so very familiar with the work that we do in the legislation. In the House, we now have 73 Democrats and 45 Republicans. And returning to the House, we have Representative Reich, Representative Weber, Ugosti, and then two newcomers, former county board member Suzanne Ness will be representing the 66th District, and then Martin McLaughlin, a new member representing the 52nd District. So we look forward to working with them. In the Senate, we have 41 Democrats, 17 Republicans, all returners into that House. Our Senate President on that side, Don Harmon, is also a friend of our Parks and Recreation and Conservation Movement. And then we also have our minority leader and Assistant Minority Leader with Senator Dan McConkey and Senator Donald DeWitt. So again, I think we're making great strides, and we'll continue to keep our relationships going. Parks Day is still scheduled down in Springfield for later this spring, depending upon the determination of COVID, but I'll send more information out on that. I did want to talk a little bit about another piece of legislation that did go forward during lame duck session. And this was a bill that was known as the Police Bill or the Criminal Justice Reform. And it is a complicated, many more than Andrew probably could share more life than I could ever even begin, as we all tried to determine. And Chief King, too, being on the Illinois Chiefs of Police Association, the Illinois Municipal League. But basically, the bill does a variety of different things and will mandate, some unfunded mandate items for us to to look into. Some things will go effective later this year on, and then other things will happen in prior years, in 2023 and then 2025. So, you know, basically, just as a very highlight level, I can speak to that our legislators from McHenry County, all of them that were seated during lame duck session, opposed the legislation. But it did have support. It did pass the Senate on a vote 32 to 23, and then on the House side, 60 to 50. So these are changes that happened through the Senate Amendment, known as Number 2. But it does not defund the police. It does not remove qualified immunity protections. But it does have, it does not change or take away collective bargaining, but it does do a variety of other things with cash bail, notification, ensuring that we do screening through mental health, which we already do for law enforcement officers, et cetera, and body cams, which is another item. So Chief King, anything else to add on this piece?
Oh, she muted.
Thank you. Thank you. The only thing that I have to add is that it is a bill that was opposed by the Illinois Chiefs Association and the Illinois Sheriff's Association, primarily because there was absolutely no correspondence or working together in the drafting of the bill. As the bill was originally written, it would have basically crippled police operations because it would have allowed anybody to sue us at any time, basically, for anything. The modifications have made the bill palatable, and it's just a new set of rules for us to follow. This isn't going to be the first time that this is done in Illinois, but it is legislation that was, you know, kind of written first, and then we're going to have to think about and figure out the consequences and how to actually implement these things a little bit later. And we will work together to figure that out. Most of the mandates that we have to come into compliance with aren't until 2025, and there's a lot of questions that need to be answered before that time. And there are times for modifications or clarifications to the legislation. Hopefully, they will come, and if not, we have plenty of time to figure out what the words that are presented today do mean. But some reform was needed based on activities that were seen in the city of Chicago. And so I just want everybody out here to understand that this bill was largely written, at least from my perspective and the chief's perspective, to problems that were being had at the Chicago PD and the reasons and the ways that Chicago PD were handling some of their transparency issues and some of their use-of-force reporting. The smaller agencies, the outlying suburbs, we don't have those same problems. We don't have those same challenges, but now we have this blanket set of rules, which in some instances will be very easy for us to follow, and other instances will have more of a challenge. So we appreciate everybody's patience, because this is an incredibly unsettling time for our police professionals. So if you happen to see them out and about while you're visiting our sites, please, if you could mention that you appreciate them, you think you're doing a great job, that type of feedback would be especially meaningful right now.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the items that were submitted for your review?
No, I think I'm good. Everybody else all right?
I do have one, the outreach for elected officials. I didn't see anything on the email. What are we going to do with that?
So we'll start scheduling some meetings. I will follow back up from last week. Several of you volunteered to assist, and we'll start some reach out. I'll work with our county board liaison. And we are, I also communicated with County Administrator Austin, so we can set up a discussion on the specific budget and the abatement. So I'm waiting to hear back probably tomorrow.
That's fine.
We're preparing for a board meeting tonight, so.
That's fine. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we're going to move on to committee assignments and reports then. Is there anyone that attended a meeting or a conference that doesn't fall under all our other headings? Okay, seeing none, then I'm going to move along here. So it gets us to Fox River Ecosystem. Lynn?
Okay, so in January, like I mentioned before, the program was on the Rollbacks to Waters, which is Waters of the United States, which removed some protections for our waterways. And we heard from local agency representatives about the impacts at the local level. In February, February 10th, this is always the second Wednesday of the month, this one will be at noon, is a program on rusty patch bumblebee and other native bees. And we've already been studying that here on our conservation sites with Cindy. But the recent, the rusty patch bumblebee was recently listed as federally endangered. And as it has been discovered on various conservation sites within the region, the talk is really designed to identify the habitat. Where can you, where can it be found in our watershed? And what can we do to help with the recovery of that species? In March, they're going to be doing, that's February, so March is the Fox River Summit, and I can get more information next month.
Thank you. Okay, that moves us on to Dave with Kishwaki River.
I actually made a meeting. How about that?
Very good.
There's some neat things going on. Boone County purchased about 200 acres at the confluence of the Kish and the Pisgahsaw, so that's just out of our county on the Boone-McHenry County line. And more into McHenry County, the Land Conservancy perched 83 acres. It says of high-quality forest, which contains pines, oak sedges, and it's at the headwaters of the Pisgahsaw, Kish, and Mokler Creek. I haven't figured out where that is, but it's connecting more than 100 acres of oak savanna and making up almost 200 acres of high-quality forest. I heard very interesting things from Scott Kitekendall and the defenders. They applied for a Full Circle Foundation Grant of $8,000, and on every McDot cross, road crossing over a stream or a tributary, they're going to put the name of that tributary and the watershed that it's in. So there's 52 county crossings, 104 signs. I just think that's neat. So when people are driving by, they're going to know where that water source is and where it's going. And I think that's really neat. Decalb has, Decalb Department of Transportation doing it. So I thought that was a real neat thing. And they're doing a new, I don't know if you know, but on the western part of the county, all six or eight townships that really have floodplain elevations. So they're getting floodplanning work on the Kish with the Illinois State Water Survey, and they're using the new water rainfall data rather than, you know, we have 100-year storm every other storm, I think. So that's happening in the Kish. And then I thought very interesting was they announced, the planning department, Joanna mentioned that they're reactivating the first drainage district, which is the South Island Drainage District. Have no clue what that is. But and they're going to be dealing, and the reason they're doing it is for climate change, the increase in rate and volume of rainfall. And the maintenance of ditches shouldn't be the landowners. It's everyone that feeds into it. But I will express my concern is dealing with drainage issues for 30 years with USDA, Natural Resources Conservation Service. I'm concerned about surface water quality and the drainage of wetlands, whether they be farm wetlands or McHenry County stormwater wetlands. Whenever you increase the volume and the drainage, you reduce the time, travel time, and that could impact a water quality, surface water quality, for sure. So I just thought I'd report on that. It looks like they're going to keep going, but I don't know where the South Island Drainage District is.
So, Pat, you know where that is?
I have no idea. Island Road, I don't know.
I didn't know if Farm Bureau would discuss that or not. I was.
No.
Well, there it is. So Joanna Coletti, that's, she's our, I forgot what her title is. I think she's the water quality or water engineer for the county. So but they're going to keep doing those, and I see the need. If the farmer's got a ditch that needs to be repaired, not only should that person pay, but everyone that drains to it. So that's their point, and that's going to get more money into the drainage system. That's it. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, Chicago Wilderness, Elizabeth?
Okay, the quarterly executive council meeting was to occur tomorrow, but due to inauguration day, that has been postponed and rescheduled for February 3rd. And that's a morning meeting that'll be through Zoom. Just to highlight a few other things that are going on, there is a Wilderness Cafe that if anybody's interested on January 28th, from 12 to 1, again, through Zoom. This is really exciting. We've been working with the Field Museum and other partners and CNAP. And we've been creating this technology hub that's going to hold data for the region on our seven goals. So again, an expanded version of the GIV, but it's really exciting, and so we're really looking forward to that. One of the other things that will be up and coming on February 17th, we will do a program with Dr. Carolyn Feeney. It'll be a live stream. She was to premiere at our Conservation Congress last year, and then COVID hit. That will be through Zoom as well. Registration is limited, so you want to get in, that's 2:00 to 3:30. And basically, she is going to obviously talk about cultural competency. She's an author, a cultural geographer, and the bestselling book, Black Faces, White Spaces, Reimagining Relationship of African-Americans to the Great Outdoors. So I highly encourage anyone that's interested in DEI work. That will be a presentation.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to Henry County Farm Bureau. Pat?
We met on the 13th, like this month. And conservation-wise, they received a grant, I think, from the Illinois Farm Bureau to monitor the water from the bioreactor. So there, that's going to happen. Other than that, nothing.
Well, that's good follow-up. I'm glad to see there was a grant to follow up on the on the other one, so that so often something gets put in place, and there's no follow-up on it. So that's, that's great.
Yeah, thanks for McHenry Farm Bureau and the Illinois Farm Bureau for following up. That's wonderful.
Thank you. Oh, Dave, you're up next.
Oh, I don't have much. The IAPD thing is the, I don't, the 23rd or something. I don't think any of us have signed up to go. It's going to be all Zoom. Elizabeth, are you going to participate?
There are several staff members that will be in attendance. It is all through Zoom. We do have a session that will be presented. The Illinois Association of Conservation and Forest Preserve Districts will also be meeting on the 29th at 9:00 AM through Zoom. So if any trustees want to join in on that meeting, you're more than welcome.
It was the 29th, Elizabeth?
The 29th, yes, is the Illinois Association of Conservation Districts and Forest Preserves. The other, the other piece that's been shaping up, and we've had several staff that have sat in on focus groups. They participate in surveys with all of the forest preserve districts and conservation districts around the area with the Illinois Parks and Recreation Association. And so we are fine-tuning our recommendation to go to their Board of Directors to basically transition our task force into a committee with the goal of turning the committee into a full section dedicated to Conservation Forest Preserve Districts in the state of Illinois so that we can address conservation-focused leadership issues and other areas that the association brings. So that is our recommendation. That'll be presented to the Board of Directors in February. That's all I have.
Dave, did you have anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Linda, Conservation Foundation?
Yep. Make sure I'm not on mute. Yeah, I'm all good. Okay. They have their annual and regular meeting put together on the 12th. A pedal, paddle, saddle is scheduled for Sunday, June 13th, so they're going forward with that. We did just, it brought, they brought up the historical structures that we had a meeting on. And as we go down the line and figure out what we're doing, they're interested in maybe partnering or maybe putting that on one of those on their, on their list. So that's something to keep in mind.
Very good.
Yeah. We definitely, if, when that time comes about, we definitely should reach out and see, see where we all sit with that. They did approve the scholarships for the underprivileged children to attend camps. So they did that, which was awesome. What else? They did appoint for the Board Development Committee, which would be Brad Semel, Kevin Ivors, and Pam Althoff. Oh, and the project report was that the Owl Aviary is complete. So that is complete. They did go over, they did go over budget, and they did approve the overage, but in the future, they would like to know ahead of time that if, where we are, like a status report of, of the money budgeted, and if we're going to, if they're going to go over or not. So.
How much we were over budget at all?
Yeah, I do. Just let me. I think the request was 3278. The actual was 4894.
Okay.
So, and they, yeah, and they did approve to go ahead and pay that. But I think in the future, they wanted to. But I think in the future, they wanted to be aware of, the board wanted to be aware of um the overages before.
That's, that's fair.
Before it happened, yeah. So I think they're, we're working on that. And I think that's about it. I have a little picture, but you probably can't see it. Maybe that's the owl aviary. I'm not very good.
How many owls do we uh, do we take in in a year?
I don't know that.
Does anybody know?
Good question.
I mean, now that we have, now that we have a spot for them, how many, how many can we hold?
Um, the aviary is, I think, more for the, the animals that are used in the programs. Although occasionally, there will be some owls that are being rehabbed to go in there.
So how many do we have? How many do we have that, do you know?
I think we've got two, uh, but don't vote me on that.
So if you get a, so if you get a, another owl, can you mix them together easily, or is there a problem there?
I'll get the, I'll get the answer uh from Sarah for the next meeting.
Okay, I'm just interested in, I mean, you can't always just throw one in with another one. It, it, with some livestock, with livestock, I know that anyway. Um, so anyway, I'm, I'm slowing things down here. Uh, that it, Linda?
Yes, that's it.
Great, thank you. Uh, Lynn, you're up next.
Okay, so um Macog is actually meeting, but it will be virtual. Um, it, their, their membership meeting for January is January twenty-seven. Um, and an email will go out one week prior to, so I'm, I'm assuming we'll get that in the mail. Other than that, uh, that's all there is.
Okay, you have green drinks right back to back there.
Yeah, I was trying, trying to look that up. Um, that's the first Wednesday I, uh, of the month. Um, it starts at six o'clock. You do need to uh register through the Defenders. There's a link in there that you can register. Um, the person speaking will be Jim Halfpenny. He's a PhD. He's a scientist and educator with a background in mammalogy and ecology, including polar alpine long-term specialties. Um, he's a, he's the president of a naturalist's world and an ecological education company. Um, so he's, he lead, he leads educational expeditions to the Arctic and has conducted Aurora photography class during the last three solar cycles maximum. So he will be coming and speaking to us about um the Aurora as well as climate change in the Arctic.
Very good, thank you. John Kramer, you're up.
Um, the MAP Committee has not been meeting, uh, but the uh bikeways or pedestrian uh planning process continues. Uh, there is a meeting scheduled for later this week, if it was so. So I don't have much report. They are out on the street now getting and soliciting uh information. Our staff, uh, I shared the information with our planning staff. They did actually note some um, some errors in their planning documents, some of their base documents, so we got those corrected. Uh, and uh it moves forward on, on Friday. I'll, I'll know a little bit more about the process and, you know, where it goes from here. But they are, they are looking for input at this point.
Okay, thank you. And Visit McHenry County, Elizabeth?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, a subgroup of the Board of Directors met last week to go over strategic planning. Um, so over at the Economic Development Corporation Office was Scott Hartman, uh, Jim McConaughey. Um, I just mentioned, uh, our liaison for the Visit McHenry County is County Board Member Tracy Von Bergen, and then the staff. Um, and really, we were doing some deeper dives on what the impact of COVID is having to tourism and the impact. So tier two and, and moving further to tier one to get uh restaurants open was key. But playing off our natural areas and marketing, um, looking at festivals and events, um, how that's going to look for this summer, whether there's going to be changes or not. Um, and so really trying to give some direction and some strategies, uh, so McHenry County can recover and get back to uh business as we had it before COVID hit.
MAP be nice. Very good. I don't have any other outreach contacts uh this time, so we're good there. Uh, that'll bring us to public comments number two. Do we have anyone out there?
I don't see anything.
Okay, with that, I would like a motion to go into executive session.
You have a motion?
No, I'll second it.
Linda and Bill?
Pursuant to two C twenty-one and two C two.
Right, thank you, Dave. So I have a motion made and seconded. Uh, could I have a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Dom?
Yes.
Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Brand?
Yes.
Trustee Henning?
Yes, a motion carries unanimously. We'll be going into executive session. Uh, for those of you that are listening in now or watching, um, when we come back to our regular meeting, all we have is adjournment, so uh there's, you can hang around if you want, but there's really nothing going to happen afterwards. So uh, that's where we're at. I will see everybody once they, once we get back.
And Elizabeth sent an email for the executive session uh link.
Right, yes.
So if everyone has that link, we're good to go. All right, thank you. We'll see you in a couple minutes. Roll call.
Trustee, yeah, trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Present.
Trustee Dom?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell? Here, trustee Brand?
Yes.
Trustee Henning?
Here, we're all present and accounted for now, so we can make a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I got Linda, do I have a second?
I second it.
Pat, I have Pat for a second. Okay, uh, roll call vote for adjournment.
Trustee Dom?
Yes.
Trustee Brand?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Henning?
Yes, we are adjourned, thank you.
Everyone be safe, see you next time.
Thank you.
Good night.